We're transitioning to more art. Let me change my title. Which I probably should have done ages ago because I've just been sitting here doing nothing. And I can close these. I don't need them. Alright, let's do more work. I do want this mod to be finished. So I can play as Yuka. So everyone can play as Yuka. But I gotta, you know, actually do the work. SNES Online? What were you gonna do in SNES Online? Harass me? That's pretty rude, isn't it? But fair. Alright, I need to acquire a Yuka. Alright, Yuka acquired. It was that simple. Get yours today. Wait, this is like almost like the same sprite. Like there's minor differences here. I mean, her arms are in different positions, but like the rest of it is pretty similar. Let's compare. To default, right? Oh, the hair is a little bit wilder. Uh, the picture channel is fine. Yeah, the hair is a little wild and the ears are a little up. What do the other attacking sprites look like? I've done them already, right? Wait, I've not done the first attack? No, it's right here. Why does it start with? What? Why does it start with Hammer 3? This sprite sheet. Gima, what the hell are you doing? Gima's lost his damn mind. This line right here? This, this one? Uh. This, I can't draw. Oh, I know why. This line right here is, uh, the first swing of Hammer. It's also the fourth one, but it's the first Hammer swing. This one up here is the third swing. This is the second one, and this is the fifth one. Why they're so out of order? I don't know. We may never know what Gima was thinking. That owl with the dots? Oopsie. I'm ready to work. I just needed like 30 minutes of doing nothing to recharge the brain. Alright, I do like Wadi's theme a lot, but we need something more. Something different, right? What don't we listen to? That's good. But like kinda cozy? You know? What does Sora's theme sound like? You know, I see Sora military. What does it sound like? Yeah, this is fine. Alright, I need the eraser. It's time to erase your body. I've erased everything, really. Sorry, Yuka. I need to see what I'm working with under here. I can probably leave the tie. Sora folder is pretty funny. Why can't we die? Look at that. Oh my god. I did say that, didn't I? Those are words that... Mm-hmm, okay. Very lewd, oh my god. Can't believe I just said that outright. Not like that. I wish you were like level. Can we, can we, can we make this happen? Yeah, line them up in the same spot-ish. Brush tool. No, it's fine. I wanna see how I react to that one. If I'm being honest. This grid starts here. Or ends there, rather. Probably... I need to see higher up Yuka's for references. Okay, not like this, though. Okay, I understand. And that's like correct. But, one more pixel. Go one more that way. Aw, I hope it was good at least. Hope you enjoyed cake. Cake is nice. A new gig. Nice. Get lots of cake. Dude, I feel like I haven't had like proper cake in ages. Is that weird? Let me get rid of these grid lines. Now I hear the frog choir. Don't listen to them. It's propaganda. Alright, how do I wanna edit the hair? Dude, I used to get like the freaking like Walmart bakery chocolate cake and just like eat the whole thing over the course of a week. And it's fucking delicious. I love that thing. But also I refrain from doing that because that's a lot of chocolate and I should not just eat an entire cake over the course of a week. All by myself. It'll go bad if I don't. I know. Like that was like in college for a lot, like a lot of weeks. That was my snack. Like sometimes like I had like a box of Pop-Tarts that I would eat every now and then. And then like maybe like a thing of chips or like something, right? But like sometimes when I went shopping for the week for like a snack for the week, I just bought a cake and ate a cake over the course of the week. Let's see, I should probably make her hair wild. This is Hammer 3, so... She should not be in like a neutral position. Dude, my glasses are uncomfortable on my face. Dude, I wish I wasn't so tired today. I guess I didn't. I got woken up kinda early and didn't really get to sleep after that. And so it probably explains why I'm tired. Don't mind me, just hurting myself? Okay, I need a different song. Yeah, that kinda, I read that like five minutes ago, but uh, yeah, that kinda happened in my family too. We make a cake and then uh... It doesn't get eaten. And I'm like the one that eats most of the cake and then I feel bad cuz I'm like, is anyone else gonna eat this? But then I'm also like, this cake needs to be eaten. I'm also like, I don't wanna shove this entire cake down my face. So yeah, it's an ordeal. Dude, how do I make Yuka's hair go wild like this? Her hair's too short. I don't know, we'll figure it out. I think I should adjust the twin tails first. Dude, adjusting the twin tails is... One of the more annoying things, IMO. Cuz I don't like it when they look too straight. They look wonky. The fact that I got a good looking twindale the first time is a miracle. Alright, but let's, let's make some magic happen. I need to zoom out again and see what's happening here. Okay. I didn't really obtain much information from that, but uh, I guess I'm just gonna rock it. We're just gonna try it. We're just gonna go for something. Just get it out there a little bit, you know? Yeah, that's not so bad. It's like, you know, how it normally is. It's just, you know, a little, it's a little more out there. And this one can be a little less so because I'm gonna, I'm kinda copying like the way her twin tails look based on the way Ariana's ears are. Is that weird? That's not weird. Are twin tails like the equivalent of like a bunny girl's ears? Am I weird for making this connection? You see what I'm saying, right? Like what if, what if like like you know how Ariana's ears just like flop around? That's like what I'm kinda doing with the twin tails. What if bunny girl with twin tails? She's got double the expressive power. That's true. There is that one. That one. I say that one like it's a disease. I'm sorry. I forgot about her, though. Laffy counts. I'll count Laffy. Yes, that's true. Magical girl, magical girl Ariana is the twin tail one. The bomb bunnies, that's true. I think this looks fine. Yeah, I also thought that, but I think he's talking about, uh, Data Live. Hey, let me do this with the mouse so I can align. Oh, right on the money. I'm nice with it. Alright, the twin tails are kinda the same, so I might just, you know... But the ears are in kinda the same position, aren't they? Sort of. Might just copy over the twin tails. Dang, it's over? That's kinda sad. I hope it was fun for you guys while it lasted. Dude, the hands are all the way up here? God damn. This is a jumbled mess of pixels. I am kind of having some difficulty telling where the arms are supposed to be. This is quite the conundrum. You know what? Since she's leaning back, I'll reposition where the tie is. Heck me. Heck me right up. Where does the, is this where the hand is? Where's the other hand? Dude, I'm confused. You guys see my issue? The hell's happening? Oh, I need like a ref. This, this has gotta be an illegal move. Whatever the hell Gima did over here. You guys are seeing what I'm seeing, right? Like you, you know, you're picking out what I'm putting down? I'm just trying to make some sense. Of like what's what? Alright. Okay, I'm gonna pretend that's correct. Yeah, that's, that looks fine. Hopefully it'll look fine in action. She looks like she's like swaying her arms out like in a jolly fashion. Yuka, you're happy. I'm happy you're happy. What are you so happy about? Oh my god, dude. I'm hacking up. Yeah, she looks like she's swinging her arms around like a 90s cartoon character. Like just happy as can be. Like, oh boy. I'm gonna do X, Y, and Z. You get what I'm saying? Or am I just rambling a bunch of nonsense? It's so funny to me. Alright, so much I love Shura's theme. Let's get a little bit of a change. What am I looking for? What does Sham's theme sound like? Sounds like that. Yeah, let's rock it. Large orange circle. I was like, what is this emoji? And well, it certainly is an orange circle. Large orange circle. What is the last O tool? Shortcut is Q? I will not remember that. Shwink? Copy, paste, drag it on over, boom. The ears are in like the same position, so I'm taking the twin tails that are identical. Alright. Now I need to play with the hair again. Part of which part for OP? Okay. Great, I remember that one less. Well, I know the song. It's Fighting Gold, but uh, I don't remember what the OP looks like. Like I was trying to, you said first, I was trying to picture the crazy noisy bizarre town OP and then you were like, wait, no, part five. And then my brain is like okay, go back, start over. Yeah, I don't remember what I barely remember like any of what, uh, the first part five OP looked like. I remember, uh, the second OP a bit. Second OP's neat. I dig it. Oh my goodness. I'm quite tired. I might call it early. This might be a very short sprite work session. Alright, this, this bunny is like identical except in the leg. I'm pretty positive. And she's quite taller, but like I'm sure these look the same, like they're exactly the same, but she's just way taller. It looks so weird though, how lanky her leg looks. It's kinda funny that we have all like these anime characters and then there's just God. This brings me joy. Alright, I'll finish up this. Alright, I'll finish up this sprite because I'll have to do with the legs and then I might, it might be over for your boy. I am zonkin over here. We're soon to be zonkin. Well, hello, Yujim. Welcome back. Like I don't know if I'm actually gonna go to bed immediately, but like I'm tired. And I kind of want to, like I'm, I don't want to just be yawning constantly and my brain is ceasing to function, so. Kind of just want to chill. Freak. Maybe have a little snack. Dude, there's so much of this left to go. Harmonica? Yujim, are you still planning on streaming? Oh, I cry. Are you gonna? You still doing? Alright, one more for the fans. For the fans. That's where the face is, right? Yes. How am I so good at lining up faces? It's my superpower. Now you're playing Mario Kart alone. I'm sorry, right? You hate to see it. Ooh, what is this foot doing? I don't like this. I don't like this at all. You see this leg? This one, like? Ugh. Gima, what are you doing? Oh, I don't like it. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna freestyle that one. That one brings me pain. And I do not like it. This stance, she looks like she's golfing. Anyone else see it? Like she's putting? Human ears and fox ears? That's fine. That's like a normal thing that happens. That's not as offensive as this broken leg I'm looking at. In my onion. That's like a thing that just happens like normally. That like artists do. They just don't give, they give their. Animal characters in both ears for some godforsaken reason. Doesn't line up with the tie. I think I need to move this because it's not like. She's kind of like centered in this stance, right? Yeah, for sure, for sure, for sure. A human tail. I don't want to know what that consists of. You, you speak of unspeakable things. Alright, let's fix this poor girl's leg. Whoopsie. Let's not break the other one while we're at it. Oh yeah, that'll do. For what I'm planning. Yeah. River Road is pretty neat. Alright, let's fix up the hair. Alright, I have a vision already. For how I want the hair to be. Which is good. I like when it comes to me. Easily. That's very nice. Boom. That's it. That's the vision. Add a slight bit of wavy to the, to the hair. Going this away. As Yuka gets ready to putt. Alright, and we'll save that.